I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome Mary Beth Widner on the ranks. She replaces Kristin Waldron, whose two terms were the end in May but have ended now. In the meantime, since our last meeting, we've also had the resignation of William Greenley, who we regret having him go and Noel Quinn up for May. I'll ask Mary Beth to give us a little bit of her background from one side.
Okay, I'm a graduate of Georgia Tech. I have both a master's and a bachelor's degree from Georgia Tech. I spent 15 years in the defense industry, working for General Dynamics in airframe design, did mathematical modeling of various systems for the F-16 and F-111. I've also spent years working in the biotech industry, designing artificial knees and knee placement parts. So I'm familiar with reading drawings and, you know, don't have any problem with understanding the laws of the city of Atherton, so I think I'm a bit fit for this position.
Well, I want to thank you for your work on replacement knees. I have two, and I'm sure they work well because of the pressure.
Welcome, Mary Beth.
The first item is a real call.
Thank you. Commissioner Leibler?
You're here.
Commissioner Widner?
Here.
Chair Christensen?
Here.
Commissioner Quinlan?
Next item is approval of a minute.
I have no comments. Very good minutes.
Anyone else with comments? Would someone make a motion then that we approve?
I'll make a move.
Oh, I do have a comment. On page seven. About one-third of the way up, if the chair, Christensen, would support the variance and added that he might suggest a brown coloring be added to the concrete to help the decking blend in more. I'd like it to read, "Brown coloring added to the concrete wall supporting the deck to help the blending end of the wall." May we have a moment?
Move, minutes be approved as amended.
Second best.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think I'd like to abstain now for the meeting, so.
Three, four, one, absent. Public comments, this is the part of our meeting where members of the public can comment by standing there on subjects that are not on the agenda. You're limited to three minutes in case you wish to take advantage of that. I don't see anybody jumping up, so we'll move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is commissioners' reports. Is there any report? I'll start with on my right, Dan.
I have one comment. I'd like to make a public apology to Kevin Keelton. Kevin, the other day, you were dead right, and I was dead wrong, so please accept my apology for the comments we made, we had the other day.
Not a problem, thank you. And I did not know you lived there, otherwise I would give you a little worm shot that it was coming, and I'm sorry for the surprise.
I have no report nor apology.
But I did show.
I have no report.
And I have no report. Staff report?
The city council at the last meeting heard an appeal of your decision to approve a variance at, that was so long ago, 38 Southern One Drive, neighboring property owner filed an appeal expressing concern with removal of the tree, and then the variance that was granted for the race deck that supported the pool. The city council upheld your decision, thereby denied the appeal. That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on a report that you gave before, I take it that since the ballpark thing has been added to the ballot, that it's no longer going to come back to us?
Correct. The ballpark item has been added as a ballot measure, as well as the town center, town center, and the library issue. So since ballpark is a matter of the vote, we will not bring it back at this time. Depending on the results of the vote, I'd like to have another conversation with the city council on the appropriate review process, because as you know, the planning commission isn't exactly in that review process, so we'll have to find out what they'd like to do.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll open up to the public hearings. The first item, number six, is a lot line designation on prior line 262 Prior.
Good evening, commissioners. The first item before you is a request for a lot line redesignation, designating the north property line as the front property line at 262 Prior Lane. The applicant is requesting this in order to locate accessory structures along the property line shared with the central school and avoid locating structures or existing heritage trees. Further, the driveway to the garage would be shorter and result in a less paved area. There is substantial screening, and neighbors have their accessory structures located in the same vicinity near the proposed garage. Steph has received four letters of support for the project, and no heritage trees will be removed as part of the proposal. I wanted to note that the applicant is possibly coming forward in the future for a special structures permit for the location of the pool, and he is here and will be speaking more to that next. We are supportive of the proposal based on the existing and required landscape screening, as well as the location of the garage near the existing school and nearby accessory structures. I am available for any questions, and the applicant and I are also here to watch. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
I have one question, which is, in the letters that were put forward, people put their addresses, and there were three on Felton. Are those the adjoining property owners on one side of the?
Correct, on the Menlo Park portion of it, yes.
Right, so do those four letters basically span this property?
I believe they do, except for the rearmost neighbor, is that correct? The rear corner, where the heritage trees are, we did not hear from that neighbor, either way.
Any other questions with staff? Would the applicant like to speak?
My name is Steve Worlick, and I'm with Young &amp; Worlick Architects. I'm representing Robin and Rich Buckway for 262 Prior. I met them four or five months ago to review their goals for the site, and those included a reconstruction of the existing main house, a detached garage, a pool house, and a pool. They've been inspired by the traditional colonial houses of older Atherton, and they actually brought this book to my attention, but there's a couple of houses here that were the prior, this was the prior house, and then one of the Hopkins daughters is another example here. This is the type of home that they would like to do, and when I met them, they had already done a lot of thinking about the site, looked at the amenities, the trees, the orientation, and it was the garage and the heritage trees that were the driver for this application to redesignate the property lines. The pool and the house, if you see in the two options that you've got, remained, I'm sorry, the pool house, the pool and the main house, all remain in the same location. We didn't want to create a little privacy buffer between the residential yard spaces and the school. The flag lot, the flag pole section of the property from Prior is 180 feet long, so putting the garage at the north corner in the area where we have the heritage trees would mean additional 200 feet of driveway. So we felt that the redesign, well, a fire department turnaround is going to be required in either case, so that either has to happen under the oak canopies, or we can accommodate it at the end of the flag pole portion where the garage is proposed. So this also ends up resulting in a net reduction of about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet of driveway paving. The garage after the redesignation also responds to two one-story neighboring, I think they're accessory structures that are directly adjacent to the same property line, and you can see them in those, I just dropped you four little aerial views. The pool, it occurred to me only recently, just this weekend, the pool as we're showing it is going to require a special structure permit, and we would have brought that in at the same time. I will be following up with an application on the pool. As we show it, the pool is going to be 18 or 20 feet behind what will be the front wall of the house, where we would need 30. If you consider the cul-de-sac and the flag lot, that pool is not visible from any of the streets, and it's still 230-plus feet from Prior. We do want to begin the engineering and the submittal process for the garage. It's the owner's intention to do the garage first and then come back later with plans for the main house. So if you know that if you vote on this tonight, we will come back with the other application. I didn't want to, we missed that, I didn't want you to think we were trying to hide it, so. The house as it exists today, actually, it has, there's a small corner that is nonconforming to the setbacks as they are established today, and this redesignation will automatically correct the nonconformities that are present on the existing property. So we feel that it's a benefit to the property and the neighbors. We think it's a good use of the available layout. And the only thing that I would throw out is that we would be happy and willing to live within the main house setbacks as are prescribed currently. It's not our intention to gain that additional 30 feet that would be available closer to the school. We would rather have the seven feet that we're losing in the other directions. That would be up to you. But if you have any questions, I can answer them now or come back during your discussion. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Well, I guess one question immediately, because I just sort of noticed that in the buildable area, which is quite a bit different from the first versus the second line, how do you work out that it's, there's a 5-foot front and rear setback from what it looks like, I think this is the current setbacks, and then in the redesignation, the front and rear setbacks will be 53?
60 is what would be required for the front and rear.
They're showing the existing setback, which I believe is 80 feet now.
Yeah, they're just showing it to the existing house.
Not minimum required.
The required setback would be 60 feet.
Okay, so in this second page where they say existing setback lines, it's not actually the buildable area, and then the buildable area is actually bigger because it's only 60 foot.
Correct, correct. We don't have any V3s.
That's what I thought, that's right. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this matter?
I just have a question. So what would the setbacks?
How did you go up and identify yourself first?
Fred Boss, I live Kitty Corner, so I just share a corner with Rich. And so the garage will be, I think, back in the corner, near the corner where I live.
And your address?
160 Felton.
Oh, you're on there, okay.
Yeah, Menlo, so most of my backyard is up to the school.
Right.
So then I just have a corner. So I guess my question just is about, that's where the garage is going to be, in that corner? So what are the setback requirements for that, and what will this garage be setback?
Can you talk to me and answer that?
Yes.
Accessory structure setback requirements is 10 feet. We do have a sidewall height limit of 11 feet and a main accessory structure building height limit of 15 feet.
So, okay, 15 feet, and then so does, is there, like, I'm doing a remodel of my house right now, in Menlo, in Felton Gables, there's a, what do you call it, a daylight plane, is there a?
We do not have a daylight plane requirement.
Okay, so this, the garage that's being proposed to be built is not, it's conforming to the setbacks?
With the lot line redesignation.
Yes, if we go ahead with this.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll close the public commentary and ask commissioners for their comments prior to taking action. Paul?
Okay. Typically, in lot line redesignations of flag lots, we have been, obviously, the intent of the provision is to try and line things up with the front, at the logical front of the property, which is usually the one facing the street, but with flag lots, it's a little bit, it doesn't really line up with what the intent of the ordinance is, and so I think our practice has been relatively lean, if, you know, the neighbors are not complaining, and it doesn't look like somebody's trying to sort of manage their way out of the development restrictions, that we've been pretty liberal with allowing the redesignations, and, you know, certainly the two findings that are required to do the redesignation, that it's not injurious to persons or anything, and it's in accord with the general plan. I think it's easy to make those findings in this sort of flag lot situation, and it does seem like it's been reasonably well thought out to provide a buffer to the school and to, you know, reduce the amount of hardscape and to not have to discuss whether to remove a bunch of heritage trees, and so in bounds, it seems like a good idea, so I'd support the redesignation.
Mary Beth?
The only concern I have is about the pool, and, you know, just to notice that there's no guarantee that the special structure for the pool will be approved as a separate item, so, but, you know, so I don't really have any problem with the process as it is today.
With the redesignation?
Right.
Phil?
I visited the site on Monday morning, and I have no problem with approving the lot line redesignation as it heads presented.
I just noticed one thing, is this, this corner of the building here, is that, is this really the site setback? Are they, they're not proposing to put the building in, but would that be nonconforming? They actually?
No, I believe it would be the Eave overhang that they're showing, and an Eave can encroach four feet into a setback, but they will not be allowed to have the wall encroach an inch into the setback.
I, like my fellow commissioners, support the redesignation. I think it makes much better use of the lot and preserves all trees that are there, so I would vote in favor and ask one of my fellow commissioners to make a motion.
Okay, I move the planning commission to approve the lot line redesignation to designate the north property line as the front property line at 262 Prior Lanes, subject to the conditions in the draft lot line redesignation certificate, and based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
I second it.
It's the move in second to approve the redesignation. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion wins for nothing, and the lot line is changed. Peter? Thank you very much. I've been advised by the only attorney on me, but you have 10 days to appeal. If anybody wishes to appeal, it's 10 days. The next item is item number seven for a special structure permit at 23 Hawthorne.
And before we begin the public hearing, I have a near neighbor, really a dear, across the street, and so I'm conflicted, and I must excuse myself, although I'll do that, and call me one of these days when you're ready.
Well, you can go home. We'll wait for Mr. Leibler.
It may take a while.
Need your replacement knees.
Yeah, more than that, I'm afraid.
Thank you. The next turn in before you is a request for approval to allow the pool to be located closer than 30 feet behind the front wall of the residence at 23 Hawthorne Drive. The applicant is proposing to build the pool nine feet behind the front wall of the main house in order to line up the house with the pool to maintain visual access and in order to preserve existing planting and trees. Their neighbor immediately to the right is currently proposing a pool in this same location. It's actually two lots that have recently been merged together, and the house will be located further away from this property than right next to it. The front of the property is completely screened from view of the right-of-way, and the town arborist did go out to the site and noted that the pool will not have a negative impact on any of the trees, and he also submitted recommendations for measures to take during construction of the pool, which would help protect and preserve the trees as well, and those have been included in your staff report, and we're also recommending that if you choose to approve, those are, that's a condition as well of the approval. We are supportive of the proposal based on the existing landscape screening, as well as the minimal impact to any neighboring properties. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the town arborist, and the applicant is here as well. One additional item, they did turn in some pictures today, which I have put up by our chairs. Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
So did you talk to any of the neighbors? Are you aware of any neighbor commentary on that?
We did send out a notice to the 500-foot radius and did not receive any commentary positive or anything.
The, you mentioned that the property to the, I guess it would be to the east, is two lots that are under one ownership?
Correct, they were actually recently merged into one, but it was.
Oh, they merged into one?
They were.
Okay.
And they'll be locating the pool on the side closest to this property.
So there's a huge distance between the property line and the house.
Correct, an entire lot, yeah.
And I think I read that, had they proposed a tennis court before, or is there a tennis court existing there? I also see the pictures.
They actually did receive a special structure permit to put in a tennis court. It was installed now, like, three-quarters of it has been landscaped over, but because the special structure permit was specifically for a tennis court, we couldn't transfer it over for the pool, but yes, they were.
So how long ago was that?
I don't remember.
Was it long?
I don't remember. No, I think it was actually a CUP, that is when we did CUPs instead of special structures. Yeah, at least more than five years, I would say.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant wish to say anything?
Make a statement. My name is Keith Reeves, P&amp;P Resources Associates, landscape engineering, and I'm here representing Joe and Ian Walsh at 23 Hawthorne. I just wanted to say that my first meeting, I'm concerned with the Welshes, the very first comment that they made was that it was absolutely critical that we protect the heritage tree. That and the fact that they also have two small children, and that the pool be visible from the living room and from the dining room for safety reasons. And the length of the pool, Joe Welsh was a swimmer, Stanford College swimmer, and so the length, the 60-foot length of the pool is actually critical for training purposes. So with all that criteria in mind, fitting the pool in place, protecting the trees, so on and so forth, the location kind of formed all the function, in other words, so just wanted to give you an idea of how that came about. Do you have any other questions about the location or setbacks or anything like that that I can answer?
Appears to be no questions.
So pushing the pool back to line up with the development standards, I mean, I don't see any trees back there, what was, why not just push it?
The criteria there was being able to literally see the pool and integrate the pool with the main portion of the house, which was the living room and the dining room, as well as the landscape area. On the plan, you might note that the present location of the front door is actually facing what might be considered the side of the lot, so the backyard is actually, kind of lines up behind the house. But the visual line of sight, being able to see the kids in the pool, being able to access the pool from the living room and from the kitchen was very important.
And have you, have you talked to the neighbors? Have the neighbors waited?
Do I need to talk to the neighbor? I'm there using some more, I'm, and Welsh. I spoke to Phil. Can I say anything about that discussion since he's a commissioner, or no?
No.
Okay. And I spoke to our next-door neighbors who merged the two lots that will be on the direct property line, although we didn't get an official letter from them. We spoke with them, and they're completely fine with our new pool in that location. Thank you.
It's time for any public comments. Any member of the public wish to comment on this application? I see none, and therefore I'll close the public commentary part of our meeting. Start on my right this time, Mary Beth, would you give us your comments?
I guess my basic comment is that I can understand the aesthetic requirements, the pool looks great from where it's positioned. However, I do think it could be moved to other locations, but that's not, you know, to be more conforming, but that's not, that's not my role to design the pool. So I really don't have any other, you know, comment regarding it.
Would you, can I ask you, you would support the application?
Yeah, I can support it.
Paul?
So I guess, since we're not allowed to talk outside of this, we got to talk here. So I can't really remember, why were we going over the, presumably, we wanted setback 30 feet from that, from the front entry to basically reduce the impact from the street? Is that what the, what the purpose of having that as the standard?
Right, and it's all accessory structures, so, and it's pretty much a historic carryover, so you didn't change it with the last update of the code, but I think it's that you want the smaller subordinate structures to be more in the rear, and the dwelling to be the more prominent structure out front, so that you didn't see smaller sheds or outbuildings when you're driving down the street. The nice thing about the pool is it is required to be fully enclosed with a fence, that's a basic safety code requirement, so they will, we'll have to install a fence on the property.
So in terms of sort of the purpose for the ordinance, it sounds like it was more, you know, if you're correct, it's sort of aimed towards things. you know, if you're correct, it's sort of aimed towards things, not only that you can see from the street, but are basically above horizontal, because obviously, a pool, you can't really, it doesn't have a six-foot wall that a shed would have or something like that, so. And if I remember correctly, most of the matters that we've, that have come before us that have asked for something like this, I can, if my recollection is correct, we've been relative, I don't think we've denied, have we?
I do recall one where a neighbor had a concern because it was close to maybe their living room area up in the front, but I don't recall one being denied. I think we worked with some additional landscape screening to mitigate that.
Right. Okay, so, you know, based on the fact that it seems like the purpose of the 30-foot setback is not being sort of circumvented in that it's not, doesn't appear to be visible from the street, it's sort of a horizontal structure, so that it's also not going to be visible even if there wasn't a lot of landscape screening, because the neighbors don't seem to have an interest or an objection to it, and since they already had the approval to put a tennis court there, you know, I guess I would support the, putting the pool there, despite the fact that if push came to shove, you could just push back the pool and conform, but I think, given all the facts, I would support the application.
Okay, I too would support the application. I think we have a unique situation here for a lot on the street. Normally, I would have to say I would not support going into the 30 feet behind the front, but we have a house to the east that is a full lot away, you have, and they in turn are going to be putting their pool or other recreational facilities against that particular property. The house itself here is, by its entry, is on the other side, so it's a little bit unique by the design, and the yard, even now, is cut off from the street by plantings and so forth, so I think it's a good use of the land at this point, so I would support the request. Now, what may we have on motion?
Even though Phil's not here?
Well, you may be...
I don't know if we're about to make a motion without Phil here. I move that the planning commission approve the special structures permit at 23 Hawthorne Drive, based on the findings and for the reasons that were raised in the staff report.
May I say?
All those in favor?
Aye.
The application passes. Three nothing. You have 10 days. Anybody has to appeal this application, the approval. We'll move on then to a special structure permit for 32 Maple, and let somebody tell Phil that you can come back.
So we can tag team, because I have, my house is within 500 feet of that property, and so therefore I need to step up, so you guys can come get me when it's over.
Thanks, Blade List, we are.
The next item before you is a request for a special structure permit to allow 53-square foot addition to a main residence at 32 Maple Drive located in the R1B zoning district. The house is currently nonconforming due to its right side yard setback. The applicant has constructed a three-foot extension into the required 30-foot left yard setback, side yard setback, excuse me, in order to legalize an existing bathroom. Once the plans were submitted to the building department, the planning department, upon review noted that the addition actually is making the left side nonconforming with regards to the setback, namely, it would make the existing setback 26.85 feet instead of 30 feet required. The 30-foot required setback is larger than most homes have in the neighborhood, however, the lot itself is also about double the width of most lots in that neighborhood, and therefore its side yards are also greater. We have received two letters against approving the project. One was included in your reports, and the second one was placed up on your dais this evening. We also received a letter from the property owner, which is also in front of you. We are not supportive of the proposal, as it's creating a new nonconforming situation. We believe that there is room towards the rear of the home for an addition, and although landscape screening would be required, we do think that there would still be negative impacts to the neighbors. I'm available to answer any questions, and the owner and applicant are also present as well. Thank you.
Do you know, I'll start the question, do you know when the house adjacent to, or that it would be affected by this setback change was built?
I don't.
And it seems to be very close to the lines, two-story house, windows look down on the property.
A lot of the homes in that neighborhood are nonconforming with regards to the side setbacks, but I'm not sure of the exact date that...
The house looks relatively new.
If it were, depending on the width of the lot, the minimum side yard setback would be 10 feet if it's a 50-foot wide lot, so it might be that if it's a narrower lot, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions?
I'll get one show.
Oh, staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
I read there's some of the reports, and do we know for sure how many trees actually have been removed?